Okay, very good. All right, at this time I'd like to call the City of Taft Planning Commission regular meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, February third, two thousand twenty-one. We are meeting at City Hall Council Chambers at two oh nine East Kern Street in Taft, California. Excuse me. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty, Taft Planning Commission meetings will be held in the following manner. Effective November fourth, two thousand twenty, Planning Commission meetings will be providing seating for six attendees on a first come, first served basis. Attendees must wear a mask in order to enter the building. Meetings will continue to be livestreamed and public comment will continue to be received per the city's policy in response to the Governor's Executive Order N dash two-nine-two-zero dash two-zero. Item number one, in order to protect our constituents, city officials, and city staff, all public meetings until further notice will be held with limited attendees in order to allow for social distancing. Planning Commission meetings will be livestreamed in real time to our YouTube channel by searching for City of Taft City Clerk on YouTube or at this link, H T T P S colon slash slash W W W dot YouTube dot com slash user slash City of Taft. Item two, public comments for Planning Commission meetings will be accepted in the following manner. In person, public comments will be accepted until three P M. the day of the meeting. Written comments may be dropped off in the Dropbox in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the City Clerk at Y Mayfield at Cityoftaft.org. Made by phone to the City Clerk's office at six-six-one-seven-six-three-one-two-two-two. The comments will received will be read into the record. Item three, should a member of the public prefer to speak during the live portion of the meetings, they shall contact the City Clerk prior to the time listed above and provide a contact phone number, be available during the meeting times of four P M. to five P M., will be contacted at the phone number provided and placed on speaker to address the commission during the meeting time. That dispenses with the Governor's order. Our regular meeting starts at four o'clock. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Bob, would you like to read?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's invocation will be by Rich Johnson from the Taft First Assembly, correct?
Yes. Now let's bow our heads. God, we just thank you, Lord, for this evening. God, that you've entrusted us, God, just to do your works over the city, over Taft. And God, just give us guidance tonight, give us direction. God, that everything we do, every decision is made is according to your purpose and your glory. God, we thank you. You are in the midst of us and your decisions are already done before you even give them to us. And we just give you the praise in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Roll call.
Thanks, Rich. Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Chairman Orrin?
Here.
Vice Chair Livingston?
Here.
Commissioner Banner is absent. Commissioner Lykum?
Here.
And Commissioner Miller is absent.
All right, thank you. Item number one on the agenda is citizens' requests slash public comments. This is the time and place for the general public to address the commission on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the commission from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Commission may receive comment and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit comments to five minutes. We have no one present to comment. Have we had any written?
No, sir.
Okay, that dispenses with item one. Item number two is the minutes for the January twentieth, two thousand twenty-one special meeting. Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries on a three-zero. Item number three, public hearing, California Department of Housing and Community Development, H C D, Housing Element Annual Progress Report, A P R, for two thousand twenty. Mr. Staples.
Thank you, Chairman Orrin. As I previewed at our last meeting, we're going to get into our reporting period as we do every year. And before you, as you mentioned, is the California Department of Housing and Community Development Annual Progress Report for the two thousand twenty calendar year for us. This is the yearly reporting we do to the state on our progress in new permitting for residential units. So yeah, the staff report is in front of you. I won't go over too much of it, other than you should have paper copies in front of you to help with taking notes or making some tables more legible. One is an entire packet. A second piece is this legal document because there is one change for Table D, and I'll go over that in a minute, what the changes are. And then Table A two, if you noticed, was highly illegible, which is the multicolored That you have three pages in front of you where hopefully zoomed in a little bit more on the list of properties in the city, which were new permits, demolitions, and those permits that were final. And it's three pages that are paper clipped together so you can put them side by side to look at the different properties that developed this year. So quickly, this required reporting to H C D is required every year. We need to submit by April first of every year. This is the fifth, I'm sorry, this is the sixth year of the current housing element cycle, which is from the years two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-three. This is the fifth year that of the six years implementing the programs that are on Table D. And the item that's changed on the table, which is this legal size item, is the third listed item regarding first-time home buyers and the status of the program. The staff report that is online has a yellow shaded box with the information there. That is because I was still working with city staff on the update to that program. And in the update you have in front of you, it states that the program is ongoing between two thousand fifteen and two thousand eighteen, the City of Taft approved ten first-time homebuyer loans. The loans and funds included seven for low-income families, three for very low-income families. The program expired with no funding for two thousand nineteen. The program was awarded new funding in two thousand twenty. There were qualified applicants, but there were no sites selected at that time. So hopefully we'll have an update for the two thousand twenty-one calendar year next year when some of these applications that came in last year are processed and funded. And we'll keep that project moving forward. In the attached table, which I also have zoomed on the TV screen to hopefully help some legibility of it, this is the second year that the state has provided this template for us to fill in with our new construction permits, demolitions. And then, as you see, as you move across, and I'll try to use the TV screen and use the colors to explain how it's organized. So this is Table A two, and the blue headers, subject headers on the left are just identifying the location, parcel number, street address, and our permit numbers. Then this orange light color is, bring the header on that one so people see it, is where we identify the properties that hit the different, or this is for entitlements. So if there was a new tract that Colston Construction approved or something else, we would identify it here. So you'd have a hundred and fifty number, whatever it may be. Or if it's broken down to some specific low-income categories, we would do that as well. And that covers the orange section here. This light yellow is the busiest section, which is all the new permits and the demolition permits that are issued. And as you'll see here, we had a busy two thousand twenty where we had both six permits for new houses, pretty much split between the Sandy Creek Estates on the west side of town and then the smaller Amber Street homes that are in the southern part of town, just south of our downtown. There's a little twelve-lot tract there where they had two new permits, and they're almost full and completed that small development. And then below that, you'll see there are seven more items, but they fit into this green category, which is the essentially the permit final. And they're calling certificates of occupancy. We don't use the term occupancy because that typically is assigned to non-residential because occupancy can change, day-to-day, year-to-year, business-to-business. Whereas a single-family, pretty much they, single-family, multi-use, multi, you know, occupancy doesn't change, but that's semantics. Here, as you can see, two of the permitted items, you can see better on the screen probably here, were in the yellow, the first two items that were permitted earlier in the year were able to be final by the end of the year. So I identified that. And then at the bottom here, there's seven homes that were completed, which were probably on the two thousand nineteen list. So the state is probably complicated things where they want both the year permits, but they also want those that were finalized in time. And a lot of times that includes the prior year's list relisted and showing that it's final, which is great to see full progress that all these new homes were completed. But it does make the list lengthy, and I just hope our numbers don't get a little sidetracked with maybe duplicating like our six permits this year unintentionally become thirteen because we have the other seven listed, but we'll see what the state does. And then this last blue section, which is the far right, if you had the three papers side by side to see the full width of these tables, is just the details of the items. So they ask if it was an infill unit, they ask if it was part of an S B thirty-five streamlining process. So the ones that are identified as a moderate or lower-income property, we have to explain how they were affordable. So you see these small paragraphs up on the screen here that are on the third page of the chart that I provided you. The homes that are on Amber Street are of a valuation or sale price that was below a threshold that our region established because they are pretty small homes, small properties. So they're in the moderate range. So even though it's not low income, it triggers a response requirement in that section. So that's why you see the four listed with responses, the others don't because they're above moderate valuations and sale prices. So and those are all the Amber Street properties, those four you see. And then, like I mentioned, we issued six demolition permits. They're not necessarily completed, and they include some from early in two thousand twenty and then some fire structures that occurred unfortunately last year. So some of those haven't been completed, but they still get listed on this, and they just won't be duplicated onto next year's list. And so to sum up, I gave you all the details of this chart. It's six new permits for six new houses, six permits for demolishing six single-family structures, two were destroyed by fire, the other four were by our procedures, and then seven homes that were completed and occupied last year. So that's it for Table A two. And then Table D, where we had the edit on the first-time homebuyer, all of the listed programs were updated for the two thousand twenty year from housing rehabilitation to ordinance updates. So a number of the items we completed early on as far back as two thousand sixteen. So those just stay static because we completed those projects during this two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-three housing element time period. So you could read through those, and if you have any questions on the programs, I can answer those as well. But with that, this item, because it's related to the housing element, we do, it's treated like a public hearing, so we open it to public comments if we had an audience and for their comments, but there's no resolution to act on. So it's, you would open the public hearing, any comments amongst yourselves, and then close the public hearing and then make your recommendation to me, but it's more of a concurrence than a formal vote.
Okay. This goes up to the city council, too?
For the final action as well, yes.
The public comment section of this is now open, which includes with on the commission. I have a question as I read this over on the blue sheet, the last one, last column, twenty-one, destroyed by fire. Is that where Chris was on North Street, right there by the old dealership?
Side by side, five hundred block to north.
Had the sign shop out back?
Sign shop in the house next to it, unfortunately.
Are there plans to, for the city to demolish that and clear the lot?
Yes, and we've been working with the contractor that's handling that because there actually is a couple more properties on that list as well, but those two, those are on this list.
I thought it turned on.
Additional are will be on next year's list once they go through them. There's a total of seven or eight properties that the council approved last fall, and we're working through the process with that. We made it one big project instead of separate demolitions.
Okay. Okay, so then on the second page with the green and yellow?
Yes.
We have the ones that are green there? The permits? Those houses were completed, aren't they, up on Amber Street?
They might be today, but they may not have two. So if you look at the ones that are in the green, and we'll pull this on the screen as well. So for this, so those are above the Amber Street, these two are Amber Street ones?
Yes.
But they were permitted in August. They may have finished around New Year's, but the final date didn't make it by.
Does this operate on a calendar year?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, they weren't done.
These two are Amber Street homes, but they were permitted, and I don't have a date for it, in two thousand nineteen, and they were completed January two thousand twenty and April two thousand twenty.
Okay.
But there are two other Amber Street homes right there that probably will be on two thousand twenty-one.
Right, their last eyes up, they're nearing completion. He only has, what, two lots left?
About that, yeah.
Yeah, good. Okay. On column eighteen, housing without financial assistance, is two hundred and four thousand dollars the threshold?
Yes, and we went more by project valuation over sales price because that's market, sales is market-driven, which it is there as well, but we wanted to go from where it started being a new permitted home. And that's where the valuation of the Amber Street homes are below that, but certainly, depending on how it's negotiated.
Their market value could be greater than that.
So we wanted to list it a little more truly where it could or should be, but certainly the market could demand a higher price.
All right.
But pretty, so far, everything over at Sandy Creek Estates, particularly the larger square footage and lot sizes, has certainly made those above moderate categories.
Okay. That's the end of my questions.
I have none.
Okay, and this time we close the public meeting, and let's give Mr. Staples the direction with the council. Is that what we need, Mark?
Yes, directions given, presuming, and this will be at the first meeting in March, if you want to hear any comments they add to this. And then this is transmitted both to the Housing and Community Development Department with the state, as well as the Office and Planning Research Department with the state. And part of this Excel spreadsheet, even though they already had electronic way transmitting, this is all to make it as paperless as possible. I apologize.
Does what we have here, what we have done, what's occurred in the city, does that help the picture? Because I don't think we did hardly anything there for a couple of years with anything affordable.
I apologize for.
As long as it's not COVID, we're okay.
Well, I'm not sick in any way, shape, or form, but I'll cover up and be as clear as I can. So Table B here gives a summary of how we've done since two thousand fifteen. And you're right, what it doesn't show is we may have been zero for both two thousand fourteen and thirteen, but it's not going to show on this table.
Right.
When we completed two thousand fifteen's report, it was tied into the fourteen and thirteen years because the state changed some of the reporting processes and how we updated the housing element. It wasn't every five year, then at that time they moved it to the eight-year cycle they're doing now. So that's why we're fifteen to thirteen. With that said, even though we reported fifteen with that prior one, it did get included with this summary. So you see, we added those six units this year, and I'll have to move the table over. And you can see we are at sixty-one units with their projection from two thousand fourteen, when they got us the, what they thought they needed, a unit number was, we would have a hundred and ninety-three more units to go to get to the two fifty-four number they set for us in fifteen. It's not a mandate, but it is a measure for both us and the state to see how our progress is. I have not received any kind of communications that is claiming any kind of issue with only having sixty-one units permitted thus far. Granted, we still have three more years in this time period. Plus, I've been in meetings where it's more countywide, and that looks at the arena progress, and we're around fifth or sixth out of the eleven cities in the valley as far as percentage-wise of meeting our arena. We're about, as you can see, around twenty, twenty-five percent. A lot of cities are still under twenty percent. So respectively, we're doing well. And as you mentioned, essentially having no or one permits probably for fourteen or thirteen, we're certainly kind of catching up from a lack of activity during the recession and coming out of it. So I think we're doing pretty well. We could do a little bit more, but we're doing well.
I would agree from my experience, the time I've been on the commission, yeah. Because we were stagnant for a good long while.
That's a good word, stagnant.
In fact, we were tearing down more than we were building.
Unfortunately, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Good, thank you. Okay, that moves us to Planning Director Report. Mr. Staples again.
Thank you, Chairman Orrin, for this item. It's just one thing I want to report on. As you recall, in housing-related, we have been awarded grants for the Senate's Bill Two grant and the Local Early Action Plan or LEAP grants of a total of about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We've released the request for proposals. It's on the city website for the consultant that we are looking for to aid us in the process of adopting a new downtown specific plan, which is under the S B two, and a ordinance amendment to shape up multiple chapters and sections of our zoning code related to getting even more, hopefully resulting, getting even more residential production out of whatever we need to update. One in particular, and I was just in a meeting with the KernCog, our regional planning agency, where state's really pushing the A D U aspect.
Yeah.
But I think Baker Soto was on the line, and they're averaging about nineteen or so permits a year. So a city that size.
For A D Us?
For A D Us. And it's, he says they're pretty split between older units and part of newer developments. So, but that's a city of three hundred eighty-some-odd-thousand people. So respectively, a handful for us would be a lot, but the state's still really pushing that. So as we go through the process, just kind of keep an ear out for that if some of the development standards we put together seem a little heavy on that. But back to the R F P, we're looking for consultants to submit for this, having a team on board with them and helping me out with this process and helping the five of you and the council. This should be a really good project. We're hoping to wrap it all up by June of next year. Some of them might spill over into the summer of two thousand twenty-two, but it's definitely a twelve-month or so process.
Yeah.
The R F Ps are due by March fourth, it's a Thursday. So we're giving everybody more than thirty days to get it in. Any questions or comments from the possible firms submitting or individuals submitting are due by Thursday, February eighteenth, and I'll issue a single amendment that addresses all the questions and comments received by early the following week, well in time to address any proposals by March fourth. And with that, I'm hoping that we would have a selected consultant by the April sixth council meeting, and hopefully we get the ground running. There should be numerous projects like this statewide because pretty much every city and county was assured the money. So hopefully we get a solid consultant to help us produce these projects. So that's it for my director's report, unless you have any questions on the R F P.
I don't, you know, it'll be interesting to see the qualifications of the people that do come forward.
Yes.
All right.
Keeping an eye on, there's many, many good firms throughout the state. There's a good dozen or so that can definitely handle this project, and I'm hoping we can get a good portion of them to.
From that, I hope you get able assistance to.
Yes.
Help you.
They're the main driver, but definitely it helped me, it'll help me more for working with the public. They're good on getting the information out of everybody, what they like and don't like, and that's going to be the key part. There's going to be a definitely, with COVID still around a bit, we're hoping to get some face-to-face interaction hopefully later this year, but there's some solid online platforms that definitely get the surveys needed, get the basic information out of the people. So we'll definitely be notifying everybody when those are out there. So we'll definitely be notifying everybody when those are out there, and we're trying to solicit that information from everybody.
Great.
Looking forward to that this summer.
Excellent, thank you. That concludes for Mr. Epperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only question is, and I apologize if my attention slipped and I missed it, but was there a reason we did not make a motion and take a vote on item number three?
It's odd, but there is no resolution on it. So, oh, yeah, I guess it did list as motion. I apologize.
No, that's okay. I didn't know if there was a reason to skip that.
Do we need to do one just to make?
Yeah, it's due to the motion, it's just a.
Formality.
Yeah, it's formality.
Okay, so I guess the motion is to recommend approval of the housing element annual report to the city council.
Correct.
Okay, second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That carries on a three zero. Thank you. That's the extent?
Excuse me?
That's all you have to say to us?
I know, usually, that's so much more.
That was pretty wordy.
I'm very brief tonight.
Thank you.
There's a motion, but no resolution or ordinance act on.
Okay. That moves us to item six, Commissioner Comments. Mr. Lykum?
I have none.
None? Sure, none? There's something the chamber's doing, and you probably know as well as I do, which is the installation, and you can explain it better than I, Mark.
I don't have the details, but the chamber did reach out in hopes that some of the opening, reopening that's been occurring statewide. So I don't know if the plans are still looking to do this, but I believe they're trying, hoping for good weather sometime later this month or early March to have it outdoors at the Oil Worker Monument.
That's.
That way, it's, we're not enclosed, we're not too close to one another. We can spread out if needed, depending on the attendance, and that's the aim.
That's a pretty creative solution for the situation we're in.
Yeah, because of the statewide emergency and county emergency, we're avoiding, reserving spaces indoors for gatherings like that. So outdoor events, like they did for the Christmas parade and other events we've had in the city, we're trying to accommodate and keep the business community moving forward and reopening and getting the business they need to survive. So I believe there will be some form of approval to have that at the Oil Worker Monument. And everybody reach out to the chamber if you want to attend.
Very good, that's, that was my understanding. That's about it. I think we need to be mindful citizens and responsible citizens. So I have a report to submit to you later about things I've seen. No, just kidding. All right, we need a representative to attend the city council meeting. Bob, we're going to allow Jerry to do that, if that's okay with you.
Sure, in a second.
Moved and seconded, you're the guy. And that brings us to item, no number, but the last item is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We are adjourned on a three zero.